All right, this time I'd like to call this special meeting to order. If you will please all rise for our invocation, our Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Father, at this time of year, we bless, ask your blessings on this board and on this staff, and everything that we are charged to do as we approach the end of the year. Also, we bless those that's helped us in Hope Mills, our first responders, because this again is a time of year that they have to work while others are home celebrating the holiday. Give us wisdom, make it so that we can work together, make wise decisions, and make sure that we move forward with those issues that are best, best decisions for the town. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Kat, this time, is, are there any additions or to our agenda? If not, we have a motion to approve our agenda. Have a motion to approve. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand, seeing none opposed. First of all, I want to tell you that the reason for calling this special meeting is primarily because of the fact that it has been a long time since the original agreement was made. The agreement that's getting ready to finish in 2019, we've been working as a mayor's coalition and along with the commissioners the entire time that I've been mayor of Hope Mills. The reason that I want to urge you, as we look closely at this, and I'm excited that Drew also has lots of information that he can share, because it's important to our town. This final agreement, for those of you that have not been along the road for all this entire time, this final agreement means that not only do we continue to receive the amount of revenue that we are receiving, but we also in year twenty, the next, first year of the next four years, our amount will increase by 10% because the share would be 40-60, whereas now it's 50-50 between county and municipalities. I guess the other thing, and I know this is a question that sometimes is asked, is what does that mean about how this is distributed? The best way that I can explain that is, in 2003 and 2004, we had a situation where Fayetteville did a large annexation. Cumberland County was faced with, they were losing a lot of tax dollars very quickly. And they had to right, they had to more or less right the ship, because what was happening was they were gonna, that all the services that they provide, they realized they were gonna lose funding for some, many of those things. So they came up with a working agreement. It was a members of, at that time, there wasn't, so to speak, a mayor's coalition, but it was members of the small municipalities, the county commissioners. Amy Cannon is probably one of the only people that is still around that was involved in that initial committee that worked toward making that initial agreement. And how the initial agreement worked was really based on per capita. And the amount of area that Fayetteville annexed, they figured that 50% of the total sales tax would then by per capita be divided among the small towns. Hope Mills, of course, then and now is the largest small town. Spring Lake is next, and then all the others go down. So that's the reason of varying the amounts. There was a question, I know about Eastover having to, they've had to actually pay some money. When they incorporated, they changed how the county looked too, because now money that was going just to the county had to go to Eastover. So moving from there, the current agreement that we have has been in shaky grounds for the past three or four years because Fayetteville wants all the money. They don't want to share. They want the entire amount of money that is, that they've gained by this annexation. With that, what happens is the county services still remain the same. They still have to provide all the things they've always provided. And what happens is with Fayetteville taking all the money, plus the increase in property taxes that they get, it's gonna make a great big deficit for the county. They actually provided this PowerPoint. I don't know, do we have the PowerPoint? I think what I'll do is let Drew go through the PowerPoint. It was presented to us, I was very thankful that Jane actually attended with me. And we have clerks from the other communities that do that also. So she was able to take notes and listen. And then we do have a good PowerPoint. Drew now has all the information too, so that he can share it with you. And not just for me to be able to answer questions, because I feel like I'm the most familiar, but I think it's good because the finance director needs to be the one really to step up and say, this is how it really affects Hope Mills. So I'm gonna turn it over to Drew. And with that, let you go. And we do have the presentation before you, so that you can follow along using that.
I don't have it as a PowerPoint, I have it as a PDF, but...
We can just scroll down through it.
Alrighty.
But like the mayor said, she gave some of the history of it. We can do a full, go through every slide and give you the history and all that kind of stuff, or we can just cut to the chase and just say, here's what affects Hope Mills, and be more brief about it. Because the mayor did a good, I guess, snapshot of some of the history behind it. But again, this is the county's presentation. This is not Hope Mills' presentation. So it's geared from the perspective of Cumberland County. But I've got our perspective that I'm gonna be adding to.
Yeah, just cut to the chase.
There's four main articles, the sales tax that the state does. This is just a breakdown for that, so we get all four articles.
That's the local tax, it's 2.25%, and the state gets 4.75%.
Yeah, they all add up to the...
The 7%.
There's the two portions of it. There's the per capita distribution, which is what we're suggesting to do, and then there's the ad valorem distribution. If we don't decide to do this, it automatically reverts back to the ad valorem system. And I'll show you what that difference would be. The mayor went over a lot of this. This is the history of, you know, when they started doing the agreements and that sort of thing. Back in 2003, when they agreed to do the 50% shares. These are just the splits between what's officially mandated by statute, what the county has to do and what the cities have to do. So the county's saying they still have to do, even though they're losing jurisdiction in some of the areas that are being annexed, they still have to provide all of these things for the entire county. The only thing mandated real for towns is bill code enforcement. But we do a lot more things than that, but county has to do that countywide. Okay, here's the slide to focus on. Okay. If you look at the Hope Mills line, you know, I told you, there's the ad valorem distribution, then there's the per capita distribution. This is based on fiscal year 2018 numbers, as of June 30th, 2018. July 1, 17 to June 30 of 18. These are actual numbers, and the county compiled this information. If we had done the ad valorem distribution, town of Hope Mills, if you see there that first column, we would have received 2.15 million dollars in sales tax distribution from the county. Using the per capita version and the way that the county has had it, that the mayors have agreed to for the past several years, we ended up with 3.259 instead of the 2.1. That difference is 1.1 million dollars if we do it the other way. So we do not want to lose the 1.1 million dollars. That translates to about 9.67 cents of sales tax if we had to come up with that by raising taxes. Almost 10 cents worth of tax to make up for that million dollars.
You mean ad valorem?
What?
You mean ad valorem increase, right?
We would have to increase our ad valorem taxes by 10 cents to make up that difference. That's just for comparison's sake. Just so you can gauge, how much would that be in taxes? It'd be 10 cents, almost 10 cents worth of tax. That's the difference. If you look at Fayetteville, their difference is 28... I mean, everybody's better with going the per capita route, but here's the difference in how Fayetteville has a proposal and the county has a proposal. And we want to go with the county's proposal and how to do this going forward. Okay, Fayetteville's proposal is to keep it with the county the same, doing the 50-50 area. But for the towns, year one, it would stay the same. Year two, we'd get 75%, which is higher. Right now, we're getting 50. Year three would be 50, year four 25, year five 12 and a half. Six to 10, we wouldn't get anything. It would phase out.
Year two, we would get 75% of what we got in FY '18, not 75% of the...
Not the growth, or the...
Right, the level will stay frozen at what we get this year.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it would reduce by that.
Each year.
But either way, it's reduced every year, and then six to ten, it just, it just goes away. Now we're not getting anything. Okay, that's the Fayetteville proposal.
The county has already told Fayetteville no on that.
Yeah.
Just flat no.
Right. The county proposal... Okay, the county proposal is, let me make sure. Okay, for years 20 through 23. Year one, which would be fiscal year 2020, it stays the same for that first year. The year after that, two through four, it would be to split 40-60 instead of 50-50.
That's on growth.
Right. Based on, it says, growth split between the county and municipalities would be 40-60. The county would get the 40, and municipalities would get the 60 going forward. That's better than the 50-50.
Per capita?
Yes, it'd be the per capita method.
Per capita growth.
Right now, it's 50-50, but they're willing to go the 40-60 so that... Time line, we have to do this agreement no later than the end of January. Otherwise, it automatically goes back to the ad valorem, and then everybody's is reduced, not just Hope Mills. This is the county, what they would have to do differently than it is the approved. So the main thing, I think we want to focus on this part right here, because this is the actual proposal from the county that they want us to approve. And how much we get in sales tax? You saw the 3.259, that's what we got in fiscal year 17, 18. Currently, the current year that we're in right now, we're on track. We had 3.259 last year. Right now, we are on track, just based on my estimates, 3.324. So we're on track to get a little bit more than last year. We budgeted 3.25, because usually for sales tax, stay conservative and try to budget what we've received the prior year. So, but yeah, we're on track this year for 3.324. So each year, there is a little bit of growth factored into this. If this doesn't go through, then the first thing I'd have to do is pretty much eliminate the 1.1 million dollars out of this, out of budget years. I guess it'd start in fiscal year 21, not next year, the year after that. I'd have to reduce the budget by that amount. And then the growth that we're seeing in sales tax right now would also have to be reduced going forward. So it'd be less growth in sales tax going forward.
And I think the thing too that was important, that in the county's discussion, was that if, say for instance, that they will do something different, they felt like they would have to raise county taxes three cents to meet the requirements.
Well, it was three cents and reduced.
And reduce...
Yeah, they're cutting, eliminating jobs.
Cut positions, yep.
It was one of those three things. They would either have to go to straight ad valorem, or they would increase property tax.
This is what the county would suggest if it goes to an ad valorem distribution. They would have to increase the taxes by three cents and reduce services for those four things.
No, actually, it was a choice between those three things.
Right.
They either did ad valorem, or they increased property tax by three cents, or they reduced services on all of the things that they have control over. Most of those, the stuff on the mandated list, they can't do anything about that, but they would eliminate education, 116 county jobs, animal control would go away, and so would all the libraries.
And we would do the same thing with ours. We would never, I would hope, never increase taxes by 10 cents all at once. But we would have to do an adjustment between either raising other revenues besides taxes and incorporating different savings measures or cutting services that we currently provide in order to, you know, make the budget balance.
And I think one of the questions that was asked was about the amount, when the money comes to Fayetteville-Cumberland County, that money comes as a lump sum from North, State of North Carolina.
Right.
What's confusing is, which has been asked, all right, how much did the Lowe's and Hope Mills pay? How much did Hope Mills bring in? There's no, it's not ever...
Don't measure it that way.
They don't measure it, they just measure...
It's by county.
Yeah. So the total amount of money the county gets is how it's divvied up.
If you spend your sales tax dollars in Fayetteville instead of Hope Mills, doesn't matter. It all goes to Cumberland County, and then it's dispersed by the same formula. So it doesn't matter how much sales tax is actually generated within the town limits of Hope Mills. That doesn't matter. It's by the same formula throughout the county. Even if it's, say there's a sales tax spent in the county that's not even in town limits. That doesn't matter, it's all used in the same formula, no matter where it's spent.
And one of the things that Fayetteville was concerned about is that they're showing how many millions of dollars they've lost over these years that they should have gotten because of this big annexation.
Right.
Well, they showed at our meeting that not only did we have, I can certainly spill water, not only did we have an issue with that, they never had that money. That was money that they've never seen, it's never been in their budget. And in our case, we've been, we've had it in our budgets. See, I just made a mess, it's alright. As long as it's in my lap, on the floor, and now it's on the papers. I'll hold them up. But the thing, the main thing was, they also showed, and I didn't find the slide in particular, but with this amount of money, this amount of annexation, Fayetteville has also garnered 7.5 million dollars of property tax that they don't ever, is it in, can you show it somewhere? And that was one of the things that Cumberland County tried to show, right there.
Yeah.
That what happened, yeah, that they still gained...
Right there, right there.
Yeah. And what they're trying to say is that this, this amount of money that Fayetteville still shows that property tax gain, and that again is something that they don't talk about.
Right.
And that's something I think that's important is, we're, we will be definitely affected by the loss of a million dollars, but you're looking at money that Fayetteville's never had in their budget. I think that's the hardest thing for them to realize, is they've never had that money to spend. And in our case, we've had the money, and you take it away from us, whereas if you gave them...
Right, now we have to cut. What it's doing is, it's adding to Fayetteville, and it's taking away from everything, the county and each of the other municipalities.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, ma'am?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It sounds like we certainly have some uncertainties here. I guess my theory over the years, and I've been along with the mayor since we started this tax deal. Go home, we couldn't sleep at night, because I didn't know what tomorrow was gonna bring. But me telling everybody and telling myself and my family, shop in Hope Mills, because I thought that's where we were getting our tax base from, but I found out tonight, that's not exactly true.
Well, what that does though, you still need to do that.
Yeah.
Because what that does, it builds up economic development in town and investment in the town.
Yeah, you want to support local...
If all of a sudden the stores in Hope Mills aren't selling, and only the ones in Fayetteville are, then we're not gonna get new stores in Hope Mills.
I thought you just said, we split what the state sends us.
That's just for sales tax.
Yeah, just sales tax.
But for other reasons, for economic development reasons, we want people to shop in Hope Mills and spend their money here.
You're talking about local tax.
But as far as sales tax dollars are concerned, it doesn't matter, it's all with the county. But as far as property tax dollars are concerned, we want new development in Hope Mills, so we want people to spend their money in town.
And we also, is that spending in town keeps those businesses active and alive.
Right.
If we don't...
Keeps them here.
Yeah, what happens is then we end up with vacant buildings, you know?
Right.
Which we've seen now, you know, we've had some new buildings that have been, or not new buildings, old buildings that have a new face.
Right.
And that increases the amount of money that we bring in.
It doesn't make a difference for sales tax, but it makes a difference for property tax and economic development.
Yeah.
And new housing and all those sorts of things, for growth.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I got a couple comments, well, a couple questions. One of them is, what's the, what's our percentages of increase of sales tax over the past two, three, four years?
Okay, I didn't, I didn't think about doing it as a percentage, but just to give you, 2017, fiscal year 17, we had 3.147, 3.15. Last year, we had 3.25. Next year, I'm estimating it to be three, or this year, I'm estimating it to be 3.324. So, you know, it went up 100,000 from 17 to 18. I'm projecting it to go up right now, in a conservative estimate, it's about 75,000, which it could be another 100,000. So that's what it's been just 17, 18, my projection for 19.
Drew, could you go to page six on the agreement proposal?
Which, which slide?
Not this slide, it's the agreement.
The actual agreement, Drew.
Go to page six, please.
Page six of the agreement. It's in there.
Yeah, it's on there.
I can answer that question, because I think I know what he's gonna ask, but I hope you got the answer.
Which part, A, B?
Okay, I'm gonna start off with A, and then I'm gonna come to B. Because B's not in the slides. B is in, is in, is in the agreement, but it's not referenced at all in the slides. But I'm gonna come to B in a minute, because that concerns me. Now for A, the reason I asked that is because next year will be the baseline that will go the additional 10%. That's the reason I asked about the sales tax growth going forward. Which, really, when you look at it, it's not really a lot, depending on what it is. But B concerns me, and it should concern every municipality. And I'm gonna tell you why. I don't know what next year's gonna be. I don't think there's anybody in this room that knows what the numbers for next year are gonna be. Unless you have a wizard's glass. I don't know what the year after that's gonna be either. But this concerns me, when I read B, and it says for any year, the sales tax revenue is less than the amount distributed for FY 2020, which is the baseline year.
Right.
40% of the decline shall be appropriated to the county, and 60% of the decline shall be appropriated to the municipalities, with each municipality's share of the decline being its percentage of the total distribution for FY 2020.
Right.
That concerns me. That greatly concerns me, because we would like to have strong years of sales tax, but when we don't, then you're gonna be hurting budgets with the 60. I would recommend to the county that B should be the standard 50-50. If there's a decrease in sales revenue, then we, then we should revert back to the default of 50-50 split.
The reasoning that it stayed 40-60 is because the arrangement is 40-60.
Right.
And that was the understanding is, every year, we're gonna, we're going to increase, and consistently, we've shown increase in sales tax. And what they're, the reason, I know that someone's probably thinking this, why just four years? What we're looking at, the potential for our sales tax numbers to increase greatly with what's taking place right now. It's, you've got the ballpark in downtown Fayetteville.
Drew.
You've got other avenues that are, that are of economic development that are growing. So what we're looking at is, this had to be put in there...
So you need to say that.
Yeah. We, this had to be put in there, but in all honesty, the anticipation is, as it has done the past years.
Right.
And the other thing I think that's got to be important to remember is, this is per capita also, and what we've seen in Hope Mills, if you go back and look, look at our population, and what has changed with the numbers of people in Hope Mills and the amount of money we've received based on that too. See, in our population, that's the reason when you sit down and look at it, Hope Mills is always brought to the table, because we are growing so quickly that our amounts are changing gradually because of the number of people we have here, because it is per capita.
Right, I haven't gone back more than five years, but sales tax has not gone down.
Yeah. But, but Madam Mayor, respectfully, I disagree that this does not have to be put in here. And if it does have to be put in here...
At this point, Commissioner Bellflowers, I want you to know that it is important that it's there, or they wouldn't have put it there. And this was drawn by the county attorney, and that's why we're going over this. It has had many, many months of deliberation.
Here's probably what would happen, if we switched that to 50-50, then they would come back and say, then A should be 50-50 as well.
Well, maybe I'm not, well, maybe there's other municipalities that's got the same concern that I do.
No, they all agreed that this was, in fact, the smaller towns, Commissioner Bellflowers, were exuberant, because they've been faced with, they're losing...
Of the 46th of B.
Uh-huh.
We're, I'm talking about paragraph B.
No, what I'm saying, we went through all of this, and even going through all of this, they were confident because the amount of growth that is happening in Cumberland County. And you're looking at the little bitty towns that are having minimal growth, but they're benefiting for the total county. This is a county-wide.
I got, Mayor, I've got this. I really, I do.
Well, I just, I just want you to be reassured...
But it's a tremendous amount of information to absorb within a couple days. And I mean, I'm just gonna be honest with you.
We're not expecting a decision tonight.
We were hoping for one tonight.
It'd be nice to do that, if we want to do it.
My motion, Mayor, is to table the decision until January the 7th at our regular meeting.
Commissioner Bellflowers, what are you hoping, what are you hoping that will happen between now and then? Trust me, I have worked on this project since 2011. I have no intention of hurting Hope Mills. I have the best interest of Hope Mills, and you have nine other mayors, and all the county commissioners that have been working on this, either by committee or by individual representation on the Finance Committee of Cumberland County. And I just feel strongly that we, at this point in time, this is new to you, it's new to this board, but it's not new to Hope Mills, because we've been involved in this all along the way. And getting an agreement now, I would not want to be the city that would be the one that would hold hostage the rest of the small towns, because really, truly, this is a good agreement.
It may be. I'd like to have an extra couple weeks and have it on the regular agenda. That's my motion. The board can go with me or not go with me. I mean, that's the motion.
Can you give me your reason why?
Well, I'd like to know what's the rush from you. Why are we doing this tonight?
Because we have to do, we have to...
Why are we doing this tonight?
Because we were presented this on Tuesday morning, and we were requested to meet with our boards, to go over this, and to try to make a... We felt like the small towns were gonna go right along with this. So then what would happen is the county could move forward, because you're gonna have to, you gotta keep in mind, we're still faced with the obstacle of whether or not Fayetteville's gonna go along with it. If you, if we don't stay unified with the small cities, January 31st, the county makes their decision. And we can't say, well, we want to change this, we want to change that, because this is what they've given us. I don't see them going back and making a change. I know, have you been...
Right, I talked with the county finance director, and this is the option. There's not a Plan B, there's not a Plan C. This, this is the option.
Okay.
The other option is, ad valorem, if this doesn't pass.
My motion still stands...
And if ad valorem goes through, then we lose a million dollars worth of sales tax.
Until January 7th during the regular meeting.
So...
We wouldn't lose a million dollars till after January 31st, right?
We don't have to have an answer until January 31st.
We don't have to have an answer until January 31st.
I'm just asking for the additional time to review all the documents.
Because they know they're gonna be faced with Fayetteville being negative. So why do we want to be negative if we know it's gonna come from somewhere?
This has nothing to do with, this has nothing to do with the city.
Everything is just so...
Yeah, if, if B is your only holdup...
Yesterday or day before.
Commissioner Bellflowers?
If, 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 section B there is your only holdup, like I said earlier, there's not been a year where sales tax has declined, in the last several.
Well, that's not my only holdup.
If it does decline...
It's not my only holdup. The rest of my holdup is, yes, Mayor, this is to a new board. And I would like to, and I, for me, I would like additional time to go through all of it. All of it. And I don't believe that asking to have this tableed till our regular meeting on the 7th of January is unreasonable. I just don't. I don't see the urgency, I don't see...
A million dollars is the urgency.
I don't see any of the other municipalities rushing to do something on this issue.
You want, you want, you know that, ask Ms. Starling, what was, what was the thoughts of the mayors at that meeting on Tuesday, on the morning?
Everyone was very positive and excited, because up until this agreement was offered, their understanding was that... their understanding was that because of Fayetteville's, uh, refusal to go along with the, the current, the, the, to, to re-engage in the, uh, agreement that's been in place, uh, that they were going to go to ad valorem. And, um, so everyone was thrilled that there was another option. And they were hoping that, you know, with enough agreement in the small municipalities, that it would put pressure on Fayetteville to go along with it. And they also said that if, if everyone, and that includes Fayetteville, hadn't signed on by January 31st, on February 4th, they've, they will meet and they will make a motion to go to ad valorem.
Madam Mayor, I think what Mr. Bellflowers is saying, I myself haven't had time to read every page of this, you know, and understand it, have it explained to me. If we wait to our first meeting in January, I don't see that that's going to, that's going to hurt us. And if it doesn't have to be done by January 31st, rushing into stuff, we can get ourselves into trouble.
This is not a rush in, Mr. Legg. I have been your representative the full time, the entire time. So I can guarantee you that I would not endorse something that I did not know was good for Hope Mills. I've been involved in this since 2011. And the mayors are stronger and more unified now than ever before. And every one of them was at the table with every county commissioner at this meeting, uh, Tuesday morning. And not only were they there, but they were at the table willing to make this agreement and to move on, because it dies, the current agreement dies in 2019. And that's, that's just, and the reason it's only four years is because they understand there could be a change of popu, of governorship in Hope Mills. I may not be mayor any longer, and I've served on this committee since 2011. There could be a change in county commissioners. All those things can change. And there could be a change in the amount of property tax and money we have, because there's a reevaluation year coming in.
Eight years. We just had one.
In eight years.
Yeah.
So what will happen is they were looking at not making it so long that it crippled the small towns or Fayetteville or Cumberland County as a whole, but also making something that they knew the members of the committee that has been involved in these negotiations could live with. So I represented Hope Mills on that committee. I went to, and you endorsed that representation on previous boards for me to be there and to represent and speak for Hope Mills. So every time I have done that, I have done that in the best interest. And I can tell you, over all this period of time, this agreement is a good agreement. And if you've got all the other mayors, and there were some members of the staff there too, of the other small cities, that were very pleased that we have come to something that they believe is workable. So I don't know why you would want to question what is a fact that is a good deal? And what can you make out of this? Because this is it. If you don't understand it, then we can do all we can to try to explain it to you, but it's not a bad deal.
Yeah, but like...
And I don't know why you don't trust my judgment, because you've trusted me to be on this committee since 2011. You for sure, and Commissioner Edwards as the other.
Right. I have no problem with your judgment on it. I just want to understand what's here.
Okay. Well, I mean, that was the point of tonight.
With God, everything's so fast, it's just hard to get.
Yeah.
Okay. That's the point of this meeting. So if you will, and that's why Drew, uh, has got the information that he can answer your questions.
Mayor Warner.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, Commissioner Bellflowers, what is it you're going to, or what are we going to discuss at the next meeting that cannot be discussed tonight?
I, I just want additional time to, to look this over myself.
The only thing I heard you say while I go is that you wanted to table it because you couldn't understand why the mayor was pushing it through.
Well, that, no, that's not, that's, that's not all I said. That's not all I said at all.
That's part of what you said.
That's part of what I said, but that's not all that I said. I do, I do have concerns about B, paragraph B. I do.
What are your concerns?
About the, uh, the 60% loss.
Okay, but we're also getting a 60% gain, and chances are that gain will be there because we have shown that, that we are steadily, historically, we are gaining every year.
Well, I'd like to just, I'd just like to have additional time to look the documents over.
Okay, why don't you take the time right now?
No, I'm not going to take it right now. I have a motion.
I, I don't understand why we can't just bring this back to January 7th. It seems that, I mean, we, we heard it, we're all, we all just, and it's just a couple of weeks away.
It's totally up to y'all, but we do have to approve it at one of the January meetings. The contract from the county, the proposal from the county is not going to change.
Just wanted to table it till the 7th. That's all.
All right. And how are you going to feel when that's, when, when Fayetteville sees that? And they say, well, there's some doubt out there, so what we're going to do is we're going to challenge it because we know that there's some questions, and we're not going to go along with it either.
But my motion has nothing to do with Fayetteville or any other municipality.
It's the perception.
Then why did we call a special meeting for this?
So that we could get this done.
Why didn't we just do this on January 7th? We had until the 31st and to give everybody time. And we just got, we just got this in our email.
It was requested from the county commissioners that we, as municipalities, we support this effort since this is what is present, they, they did this at their financial meeting, and they presented it to us, um, along with Amy Cannon on that, at that morning meeting. And that was presented to us so that then they felt like our boards were aware because we've said this conversation about the local agreement. And the idea is the small municipalities support it. We're unified in that support. And then that'll cause, hopefully Fayetteville will be showing that same consideration and move forward with us.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'm very aware of what was offered to us before, of what was, we were told could happen. And I agree, what's in here, on the surface, looking at the numbers, is better than what we were going to get. Much better. But I don't understand how it's going to work in the future after 2020.
It's going to be better after 2020 because instead of, instead of the additional money being 50/50, it's going to be we get 60 and that county gets 40. So we actually show an increase, and that increase will stay in place until 2024, when then again, we probably, somewhere around 2022, the committee will be reconvened to start talking about sales tax distribution and where we are in time. And, you know, we've spent a lot of time on this. We, meaning my representation of the board. And it wasn't a matter of, it was mayors and commissioners meeting. And we've done this as a committee that we started out with, um, Glenn Adams and, and Commissioner Council and the former members of the Fayetteville City Council that was on it. It started out in 2011 when Tony Chivani was on as mayor of Fayetteville. So what has happened, the only consistent thing is most of the municipality mayors have stayed the same. And the Fayetteville mayor has changed now for the third time over this period of time. So we've worked diligently at this. The, you know, you can talk to Mayor Turpin, who is, uh, was the spring board for getting the decision made right away because we've been on hold this whole year, because we thought Mayor Colvin would come on board and sign the current agreement, and he, he has not. And he's then, Fayetteville made their proposal of their agreement, and of course, the county turned it down. And then the county, uh, with the Finance Committee of the county, came up with this agreement. And that's what the goal was, for this agreement to be accepted. And then because of the unified mayors coalition, and which meant the towns were unified with us, that, that would put the pressure on Fayetteville to sign it, and we could move on. That was the goal, to move forward and get this behind us.
Madam Mayor, if I might?
Yes, sir.
Um, and I don't think anybody up here is, um, saying we're not going to support it. I think some of them are just saying they want more time to study on it. When Fayetteville says they want that there'd be no distribution year six through 10, no distribution, they're saying we would get zero sales tax?
No, we get our regular allotment. We don't get the additional.
We would just get the regular allotment and not the 6% of the growth.
That's what...
He said 75% of fiscal year 18.
He was asking about Fayetteville.
50% of fiscal year 18.
Proposal.
Proposal.
25% of fiscal year 18.
There would be no distribution.
Explain to them that we get regular sales tax, and then we get this additional piece of sales tax because of the growth and annexation. We automatically get per capita.
When Fayetteville grows, or any town, because we get a small distribution from Fayetteville, Spring Lake, and is it Godwin? We get about 250,000, or two, yeah, $250,000 from Fayetteville for their 50% distribution. We get about 20,000 from Spring Lake and about 1,000, 1,200 dollars, not much at all from Godwin. If there's no distribution with that, then that would also go away. So that would be about 270, 275,000 that Fayetteville is saying they're not going to do it anymore in year six through 10. So then that would, that would go away for us.
And that's the extra money we're getting.
Give me that figure again, 275,000?
About 275,000.
275,000.
That's based on probably the last two years of budgets.
Per year. Okay. So Fayetteville, Fayetteville's agreement is a little stronger here too.
We get that money from the other municipalities.
It's a decline. Also, as I mentioned to the board...
And that would be about two cents worth of tax, over two cents.
As I mentioned to the board in Chapel Hill and maybe in one other meeting, I'd remind you that this General Assembly has greatly expanded sales tax to services. So there's no way sales tax is going down.
Right.
Right.
Uh, they're taxing almost everything that happens. If you go to the auto repair shop, you now pay sales tax.
And there's more online sales tax.
On a basic repair, he's charging sales tax.
Yep.
Uh, if you buy, if you, if you have an IT guy come, you're paying sales tax. Those are all taxes that weren't prevalent three years ago. But we still have the other taxes in place. So, I mean, unless there's, and there's always a possibility we could go into a recession and the sales tax goes into the tank, right? That'd be bad for everybody. Yeah, I, I don't think anybody's making it personal here. I think we just wanted more time to study on this, so.
As far as your finance director, my personal opinion is we do need to approve this. It's the best deal we're going to get from the county. I recommend it. And I also recommend that we do approve it as soon as we can to show the support and to show all the other municipalities that we're behind this, and we need this to happen.
And that's mainly because we're the largest municipality. We're the largest small municipality.
And we can do that on January 7th, correct?
If that's the soonest y'all want to approve it, but we need to approve it as soon as possible.
I mean, but we can do that on January the 7th. Okay.
And the current agreement expires June 30th.
30th, January, oh, June.
January 31st.
I thought I said that extension was the June 30th, 2019.
Oh.
Oh, the current one.
Is it not?
The current year goes through this year.
But if we don't make a decision by January 31st, it automatically...
That goes away.
April is when they make the change.
And then we automatically lose a million dollars.
A million dollars.
Starting July, next year's fiscal budget.
I think one other thing that I will say that is important is every April, they can make a decision. So any, any delays after January 31st, either because of wanting to change this agreement or Fayetteville unwilling to sign, it's not going to happen because they've put the date, it's January 31st. And once they make that decision, then it goes into play. So what we're faced with is if, you know, you questioned B or C or D, and you don't understand it, and you don't trust Drew and myself, that we believe this is the best agreement, then that vagueness out there, I'm afraid what we're going to see is the county commissioners are going to take that as that, you know, why would you question what they've put a lot of effort into? And they're recommending this. And Amy Cannon, who I've already stated was in the original initial agreement, is still on board, and she's the one that helped with this. And she's probably, you know, one of the best county managers around as far as her expertise. But we do have a motion on the floor. And I just hope that you understand that whatever reasons that you give, and this is the way, the way you want to go, that I believe personally that we should support this effort because this is provided to us by the county commissioners, which, yeah, they've done their due diligence. They've done their checks and balances. And they really have the control over what happens because they're the controller of the money. So we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Bellflowers to postpone this to January 7th. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? It's a four to one. We'll see you January 7th. If you would, ask Amy Cannon and also I'll ask Chair, Commissioner Glenn Adams to attend that meeting. And because I think both of them have said, and they did come up to us and tell us that they would be more than willing to, to be here if, if in fact, it didn't compete with another county meeting.
And I guess I would suggest in the meantime, if you do have any questions, give me a, let, you know, let us know what those questions are so that we can, you know, have an informed decision then on the 7th.
Well, I will, Drew, once I go through it again.
Okay.
Several times. And I may not have any questions. But anyway, I've said all I'm going to say.
Do we have a motion to...